All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our town council workshop. Today is Wednesday, September 18, 2024. It's 5:00 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Lord.
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan.
Here.
Mayor Mayor Butt.
Present.
I'll form. All right, thank you. If you'd all rise with me and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for being here. Ralph, I'm gonna go ahead and start off and turn it off over to you and let you get to this, okay?
Thank you, Mayor Members of the Council and folks watching and folks that are probably stuck in traffic too with the train. Tonight, we have a council workshop regarding our eight and a half acre parcel that we acquired on Old Cutler Road and 184 Street, as we also know it as Eureka. Just to set the journey before our consultant comes up, as you recall, we purchased the property for eight and a half million dollars and immediately we started searching for different types of grants. And one of the grants that we received was from the Florida Communities Trust, FCT, that we were awarded $1.5 million, but as FCT does, they go up to a maximum of $20 million per year, and we were cut in the middle, our application, meaning that we will be receiving about $865,000. What's that mean? Is that the folks, the cities that are ahead of us and counties that are ahead of us, if for a reason they don't close on that property, we still have the rest of that money that we filled up our bucket. So that's one grant. The second grant that we were able to receive was a $250,000 appropriation through FDEP, in which we matched 250, so that's $500,000 for what we call the design phase restoration phase as well. So part of the design phase, we contracted with StanTech for the design phase as well as to develop the RFP for the removal of all the trees and invasive trees that are there. I know many of you have been to the site, if not all of you, and probably safe to say approximately 90% of the trees are all invasive. But we did not want to start that permitting yet for that until we have a developed master plan so we could follow the same process that we've done with Legacy Park where we'll have a nice coming soon sign at the location. And then while the Durham permit is being reviewed and the best way to remove all those invasives. And with that, I'd like to bring up StanTech from Miller Face, Nicholas Alvarez there. And we have Sean and his team there, if you want to introduce your team, from StanTech. And we have a brief PowerPoint presentation here because this will be the first opportunity. And I know many of you have seen it throughout our public involvement events, but this will be the first time collectively you see it in the Sunshine Meeting. So thank you once again for having us at this council workshop. So Nick?
Oh, sorry. It's good to see you all again. Like Ralph says, I'm Nick Perez. I'm your project manager with StanTech. I was actually the planning administrator here for the town when you first acquired this property. So it's been really exciting to see this kind of morph to where it is today. Also with our team is Sean Campell on the civil and design side and Adriana Cordera and Amanda DeCun. They're on our team with the environmental permitting side. Sorry. Just a quick project background, the town acquired this property in December of 2020. It remains just a vacant undeveloped land, although the vast majority of it consists of non-native invasive species, as you're probably already aware. In 2022, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection issued a $1.1 million grant to the town to help offset some of the costs of the property acquisition. Followed by in June of the following year, the FDEP issued another $250,000, which was to fund the design, the permitting and the removal of the invasive exotics. That was followed by a town $250,000 match. And then more recently, the Miami-Dade County Board of County Commissioners approved an appropriation, the amount of another $250,000 for this project. This project aligns with your comprehensive plan in several ways, particularly out of the conservation element. The objective C4, it advances in terms of just preservation of the 100-year floodplain and preservation of natural drainage features. It also advances objective C5 out of your comprehensive plan, which is to conserve and protect whatever remaining natural systems are throughout the town. C7, which speaks to protection and also enhancement where possible of environmentally endangered and threatened species. And objective C11 also advances, is also advanced by this project, which is to just continually seek opportunities to acquire any other public land that can be used for conservation. So to start, when the project team developed these preliminary concepts, there were several visioning considerations that we knew were important to the town. One, we knew that the public wanted to have some kind of access to get out and enjoy the site and walk out there that could be in the form of a boardwalk, but maybe not. But what's important is that there's some kind of walking path. Also important is to have some kind of site security with the perimeter fence and swing gates to just restrict access after hours. We know another element that's really important is having some kind of educational component that could be in the form of an educational pavilion and signage that could just inform people about surrounding wildlife, ecosystem, all that. Given that this is right on an extremely popular bike route, we know that the site needs to be very bike friendly and provide adequate bike parking. And lastly, this is simple, but also super important is just having adequate seating. We don't want this to just be a pass-through site. We want to encourage people to stay and linger and actually enjoy the scenery. Another element that's guiding the visioning of this project is the Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan, or SERP, that largely consists of a variety of wetland rehydration projects throughout South Florida, one of which is planned right adjacent to the site. So you see in this diagram that was provided by the county. The plan is to pipe freshwater down from the canals behind Bill Sadowski Park adjacent to this site and just allow freshwater flow back into those wetlands that are in need of freshwater. So nothing in this project is meant to conflict with that plan. If anything, it embraces and it's gonna work with it. So moving on to the development of the preliminary concepts, we took all those visioning considerations and distilled them into the one concept that you see here, reflecting a couple of components, benches, parking, the pedestrian path, nature pavilions. And then Concept 2 showed all those elements, just in a slightly different configuration, where the walking path is in more of a loop that follows the perimeter of the property. And we took these two preliminary concept plans and put them together as a tool for the next round of community engagement and gathering feedback from the public. So we had three specific events in trying to gain input on those preliminary concept plans. The first was on April 1st at the Parks Advisory Committee here in the building. The second was on April 6th, actually out there on the site. It was a visioning session that coincided with a restoration cleanup. And that was actually really cool to be out there on a Saturday morning and residents just happened to be walking or jogging down Old Cutler and popped in and shared with us how they saw themselves using this site. And we got a lot of good feedback. The third event was on May 18th, that year Wings Over the Bay event at Cutler Ridge Park, where again, we had a table set up with a big printout of these preliminary concept plans and people had the opportunity to just write their comments on them and/or give verbal comments. Showing here is a scan of the markups that we had out of the April 6 onsite visioning session. We got a lot of great input and just a few to highlight. One was people reiterated that it's important to keep this as a passive recreation site. Nobody wanted, everybody we heard from didn't want to see anything, any intensity beyond what you would see in a typical public access nature preserve. Another idea we received was that what if instead of a loop, you would have more of a walking path up the middle of the site that would act as kind of a defining border between two South Florida native habitats of pine rockland and hardwood hammock. And another idea we had was, what if the site was more integrated with that future SERP wetland rehydration project where you have an observation deck at the eastern edge of the property where people go to walk out and actually see the wetlands being nourished with this new freshwater flow? So we're really happy with the amount of comments that we received. And we took all those comments and we distilled them into the draft final concept plan that you see here. And I'm gonna just pretend that we're walking through the site from the southern end at the parking lot. Imagine you're walking through that first nature pavilion that could have some kind of interactive educational features or seating. And as you progress through and walking up the path, to your left, you would have South Florida native pine rockland habitat that consists largely of slash pines and salt palmettos. And to your right is more of a woodsy native hardwood hammock forest. And then progressing up the path, you see on your right, to the right side is that observation deck where you could walk up and see that wetland rehydration project happening below your feet. Maybe there's some kind of interactive educational component there where people can learn about what's happening and all the ecosystem benefits of that project. Continuing up to the trail to that second pavilion on the north end, it could be a second nature pavilion that could serve as an outdoor classroom space. More recently, we've gotten ideas of what if it becomes a bat house and serves, just has additional wildlife benefit? So that's all still on the table, all those options. And at that point, you can either exit out onto Old Color and continue on your way or double back down the trail to the parking lot. So I just want to thank all the members of the public that gave us all the feedback. We really think that it helped us make a better plan that that better reflects what the community wants to see out there. Moving on to next steps, on the planning side would be formal adoption by resolution of the draft final concept plan. And on the permitting phase, the team is gonna start getting underway in securing all the environmental permits necessary and the actual clearing of the site of all the exotic invasives. And permits maybe might be required, not just from Miami-Dade County, but from the US Army Corps/FDEP and also the South Florida Water Management District. And additionally, we're gonna be assisting the town with the preparation of the bid documents and selecting a contractor and actually going out there and removing the invasives. And here's a simple diagram showing the environmental permitting process from the gathering of the documents and submittal and allowing time for review and comments and resubmittal. We're estimating it could be roughly six to eight month timeline. That concludes our presentation. Thank you all for listening and we're available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Ralph, before I go to the council, did you want to add any comments to that?
I think also, Mayor, I know I said it before, I think it was one of the council meetings, but just in preparation for tonight's meeting, this project, we actually submitted it to the Florida Coastal Management Program and the state of Florida through FDEP. And it was one of three projects within the state that was selected to move forward to the NOAA appropriation bill. And we actually submitted for habitat restoration, an additional million dollar grant as well. So now we have our federal lobbyists up there as well in DC, working the NOAA infrastructure bill as well. So that's great news. And then also, we're closely monitoring what's going on next door with the 100-plus acres where Miami-Dade County received a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation planning grant for $300,000 and they're putting another $437,000 there for the complete restoration of the property next door. It's owned by South Florida Water Management District. So we're actually also monitoring that as well. So there's a lot of moving parts, Mayor, Mayor, Council. And again, this is the conceptual plan that we have. And I know there's been a lot of talk in the community regarding getting various groups involved and what elevation, species there. And our intention is absolutely to do that. But I want to at least get this master plan before you collectively as a body to receive some of that feedback. So then we continue. Our plan timeline is gonna be to receive some of those comments that you have tonight. And then during the October 16th meeting, if we're ready, then we'll come back with the final master plans. We could adopt it via resolution. As you know, we love adopting conceptual master plans via resolution because that also provides us more points when we're going through the different granting agencies. So again, today is just really just to get that feedback from the council members. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll open up to the council for comments and questions. Vice Mayor Callahan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. No one to thank, StanTech. You guys for working very hard on this project and particularly listening to the comments of our residents. This project has been vetted through the Parks Committee very carefully since the acquisition of the property. The Parks Committee has been very adamant on several issues that you've addressed. Obviously, one, that this remained a very, very, very passive park, right? And dedicated to nature and its surrounding, which from the initial concept to what we have before us, I think is captured a lot of what the vision was, not only from the Parks Committee, but from our residents. There's one thing, though, I do want to make clear and make sure that does remain in the plan is that we must have an educational pavilion, right? The bat thing is a great idea, but I don't want that to be in lieu of the educational part of it. Since the very beginning, as the Parks Committee worked on this project, the education portion of it was extremely important, where we had partnered in the past with our coast programs to bring them at that time to the Deering Estate. But now we have the opportunity to bring them to our very own nature preserve to share that same type of educational experience. And in fact, during this process, we have had conversations with the Deering Estate who have been interested in bringing their groups, the other schools that participate in their program, but also bringing them over to this parcel as well to share in the same type of educational experience. Really like the observation deck that looks out into the wetlands because I think that is really the key backbone to the educational experience. There had been conversations at one point in time with the county of eventually maybe even building a boardwalk that extends further out into their area that would allow for a larger educational experience. But from that, on behalf of the Parks Committee and myself, I just want to thank you guys for all of the hard work and really capturing the vision of what our residents have. But I just want to make sure that we keep that educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez?
First off, very, very nice presentation, very good job. Thank you for the work that you guys have been doing. I was out for both of the invites for the public to come out and help with removing the invasives and everything else like that. And what I was really impressed with was the people that actually came by, not just the volunteers, but like you said, people that stopped by and put their two cents worth. You had the layout there and they were able to write on there, "This is one that we'd like to see, blah, blah, blah." And you guys really have taken it and kind of made it part of this whole thing. The only question I have is, if you do the pavilions, I know we want to keep this as natural as possible, what kind of base that those pavilions be built on? I mean, what would that kind of be made of? Or how does that come into, because I know we want to keep this, I'm just curious. I don't have any idea, so I'm kind of asking. And maybe also, if we put in a boardwalk, what do we use for that kind of stuff? It might be early, might be too early in the game to ask this question, but I'm looking at this, I'm going, that's pretty neat.
I'll let Sean, our civil engineer, speak to that. I'm not gonna pretend that.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Yes, and you're right, we would have to dive more into the details of final design to determine that, but it will certainly fit with the theme of the natural look. And if we can use, if it needs piles, use some sort of timber or natural pile type thing. If it makes sense to have it elevated a little bit, we do so. Concrete is possible, depending on, the soils are pretty good there. So depending on what is needed and what's cost effective is what the material selection would end up being.
Thanks, I was curious about that.
Sure, sure.
Really nice, really. I like actually both the designs, the middle one and also the roundabout. So I don't know which one we're gonna go with, but whatever it's gonna be, I'm pretty sure it's gonna look real nice. So thank you, guys.
Pop, you have a comment on that?
Yes, Councilmember, great question because that's something we've already talked internally. And one of the things that we're already steering to, similar to what we have told our friends from South Florida Water Management District on the 97th Avenue project that they have down south off of 232, is looking at the same type of theme that we have for decorative bus shelters. They have that coral rock theme that we have to continue that theme because that's the same theme that we gave the district for their pavilion. So that way starts that consistency. And in terms of the type of material, we know that it's gonna have to be an ADA approval walkway. So I know I could tell you what it's not gonna be because it's been an experiment that we've done and I'm sure our Parks Recreation Director is gonna appreciate it. It's not gonna be that little pebble rock that we have in the Lakeside by the Bay canoe kayak launch. We did that experiment and it's just a lot of maintenance issues that we have there, right? Folks just like going out there and doing donuts and what have you. So we know it's not gonna be that, but that was an experiment. We have to try it once, right? But I think it's something that we wanted to make sure is not gonna be just plain old asphalt, right? We want to make sure it's some kind of eco-friendly ADA compliance type of walkway. So absolutely right. Thank you.
Councilman Lord?
I too enjoyed this presentation. I was on Parks and Rec before I was elected and we did discuss this project while I was on it. So it's exciting to me to see the renderings. And also agreed, most of our discussion was the educational element that this property provides. And however, I do love the idea of a bat house. I'm an Austin fanatic. I go to see the bats every year. So let's see if we can keep that in there.
And it's not either or. Right now, there's two pavilions shown on the site plan, so we could potentially accommodate both.
I'm gonna second what Councilman Lord says. When Ralph talked to me about the potential of a bat house there and bringing an expert, not to mention they love mosquitoes, but it's a good natural way to take care of that. But I'm really excited about that. Happy about the design of the project. And again, glad that we preserved this land as natural environment instead of home. So great job.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. In fact, one of the credit sources actually was one of the community members that provided me that information, Mr. Walter Barona. And then it just kind of took off, Mayor. If you recall, we were at a luncheon for the community newspaper, right, last Friday? And you were lucky enough to sit two seats down from Ron McGill and I took advantage of that opportunity. And thank you, Ron, because he's actually sent me about seven emails today, providing me all the different informations, a great opportunity there. But again, number one priority is gonna be that education pavilion. Right now, what we're looking at is the northern portion of that pavilion there, the northern part of the property adjacent to the water treatment plant there, sorry, sewer treatment plant. That's where it would be, not on the southern part for the educational part.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you for everybody else who was involved in putting that together. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ralph, anything else, sir?
No, I'd like to recognize Craig Russenberger there, Craig, from Miami-Dade County Durham there. He's been involved behind the scenes, a Commingled Bay resident, but very passionate about this. And thank you, Craig, for attending and all your advice. Thank you.
All right. And also thanks to the Parks Committee for their involvement in this as well. All right, we have another meeting starts in about 33 minutes. So until then, this meeting is adjourned. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular town council meeting. Today's date is Wednesday, September 18, 2024. Mr. Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Lord?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Here.
Mayor Mayor Butt?
Present.
I'll form. If you please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular scheduled town council meeting. I'm gonna start it off. Not too much on the agenda tonight, but some interesting things. So we'll start it off. I'm gonna open it up first with the public comments. Marissa, if you could read, please read the instructions for calling in for public comments.
Please be advised that when joining the meeting, you are automatically muted. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The public was able to make public comments prior to the meeting either by leaving a voicemail message or sending an email to the town clerk. There were no voicemails or emailed public comments for this evening's meeting. If you wish to speak tonight, please press star nine and the host will be alerted. Pressing star nine is known as raising your hand. Once you press star nine, you will be placed in a queue to speak and will be called upon by your name or your last three digits of your telephone number. Please wait to be called upon. Please state your name and address. If you are a hired consultant or town employee and/or if you are engaged in lobbying activities and/or representing an organization, please provide that information before speaking. Please be sure to be in a quiet area to avoid unnecessary noise. A time limit of three minutes will be imposed for each speaker during public comments.
All right, thank you very much. I'm opening up the floor now for public comments. Anybody who wishes to speak, please come forward and give me your name and address. Come up quickly, thank you. Anybody wishing to speak after him, please appreciate if you would line up rather than waiting.
Thank you for your time. Hi, my name is Joe Barron. Good evening. My name is Joseph Barron. I live on 8384 Southwest 187 Terrace. I'm sure you're familiar with who I am. I'm here to speak about the flooding that's been occurring on my property for over the past five years as a result of Cutler Bay's repeated failure to enforce the building code. And heavy rains over a foot of water collects against the foundation of my home. And that's due to stormwater that pours into my property from the adjacent property. Recent work was done to the adjacent property, excuse me, and Cutler Bay failed once again to ensure that the building code was followed. Not only was my property encroached and regraded, which the building department chose to ignore when they were informed of the topographical survey, the new land grading does not show that the water is being retained. This is a direct violation of Florida building code. I have a letter from the town manager that states an ordinance was passed, which requires all Cutler Bay residents to submit the survey for certain construction permits. And in his letter, he states that my flooding situation is the reason that the ordinance was put in place, which is the purpose of requiring all Cutler Bay homeowners to pay hundreds of dollars for a survey. Sorry, which is the purpose of requiring all Cutler Bay homeowners to pay hundreds of dollars for a survey if you are not going to use it for that purpose. We recently received an email from the vice mayor stating that a drain is going to be placed on our street to help our flooding. Although I appreciate this response, I think it's important for all residents to understand the financial significance of the project. To my understanding, just the plans alone of this strange project will cost up to 33 grand. Who knows how much the actual drain would cost as well as the timeframe for completion? Okay, but requiring the adjacent property to follow the building code is important. Excuse me. I do not want to create any hardship right now for all parties involved. But I have worked hard to provide for my family and to give them a safe home and to nervous. Forgive me.
No problem.
I guess I can email you guys the rest of this, okay?
All right.
Forgive me. You guys know why I'm here. And I'm gonna email you this privately. I'm just not a good public speaker, okay? And we'll talk. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak, please come forward. All right, anybody in the queue?
No one in the queue.
Public comments is now closed. This takes us on to the town council and board and committee reports. Any additions to the reports? All right, there are none. Okay, town manager report. Ralph, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Members of the Council. Tonight, we have our monthly update from Ms. Emma Jones from StanTech regarding update of the design services for 16-acre Legacy Park and municipal complex.
Good evening, everyone. Emma Jones, StanTech, owners rep for the town of Cutler Bay. So we've made some great progress in the 16-acre park project. We've been working through finalizing the pre-construction agreement with Kaufman Lynn and the town's legal counsel. And I believe we are almost complete with that. This is the pre-construction agreement, but we have also discussed many of the parameters that will need to be in place for the overall construction agreement. Um, this is the, the pre-construction agreement, but we have also discussed many of the parameters that will need to be in place for the overall construction agreement. So, um, those no, no, those future, uh, negotiations should, um, move a lot quicker. We have, um, the team has now completed the DD phase or design development phase, um, and that includes a complete set of design documents. As we have sort of concluded that phase, we have now hit pause on any further design until we have a detailed, build, um, up-to-date budget or a detailed budget based on those design documents from Kaufman Lynn. And that'll allow us to take another, um, deep dive into where we need to cut costs, um, how we can, um, change the design to reduce costs and, um, also look at potential phasing options. So while those design documents were being completed, um, and post their completion, we had a series of meetings with, um, our design partners, Salz Michelson, their, um, various consultants, Kaufman Lynn, some of our, some of the towns' users, um, that work at the town hall, uh, you know, your facilities, uh, team, et cetera. And we looked through those to, um, we had those meetings to review the high price items in the design and look for alternative methods, alternative materials, um, or different design options to maintain the concept that the town wants, but reduce costs in order to, um, to get that concept. Areas of focus were the park. Specifically, the pond, the bridges, the lookouts, terracing in the pavilion, the garage, um, just a tightening of the, the square footage and, um, discussion of, of how many elevators, the HVAC for each building in general. The town hall, which we have now, um, had the discussion, will only be two levels and will use the space that is above the town chambers. And then, um, utilities in general, and then the overall sort of what I consider to be the excess aesthetics on the buildings. And those are those fancy covered arches between the town hall and the police station. So we're looking at more economic options and, uh, for those. And if necessary, we can eliminate them and, um, and get that effect with, with, um, down the road in the future. So, um, in about a month, we will have a detailed cost estimate on, from Kaufman Lynn, um, based on this, this design document set. And as well as a revised site plan that we have all worked, worked towards. Um, and then one of the other things I just wanted to mention is that phasing is one of the key concepts. And the example of what we might be able to phase would be, for example, the garage. Um, we could surface park a hundred cars where the garage is gonna be. Garage will hold three hundred. Um, that gives us some flexibility and timing. And then the other item that we are, um, planning to do is the GMP, which is the, um, growth maximum price. Uh, we are going to split that into two phases. Um, the, it'll, GMP one will be the site work, um, brownfield remediation and all of the make-ready work. Um, and then GMP two will focus on the, um, the vertical build. And this enables us to keep moving, um, stay on schedule, keep the project moving forward and prepare the site while we're finalizing the design and completing the construction documents. And that's my update for this evening.
Thank you very much for that. Ralph?
And thank you, Mary. And as you can see, we've been this last month and, and the one thing I'd like to, uh, kindly request the council, if we have a council workshop just before our October sixteenth council meeting, maybe from four to six this time, where we could, um, have those, um, detailed cost estimates. As, as Emma mentioned, we're about, you know, about a month away from that, but at least we get that formalized. Uh, um, and, and again, you know, uh, I think we should be ready by that, but we, we're still meeting on a monthly, sorry, on a weekly basis. And again, it's just asking the council to get hold a workshop just before our October sixteenth council meeting, you know, from four to six.
All right. We'll check our calendars and I think each of you can report to you individually on those dates. Okay? All right.
Okay. Thank you, Emma. Um, next we have, um, familiar face to us. If you, if you've been around the town here, we have, uh, Gary Ratai, who from Kimley Horn Associates said it's gonna provide us an update on Frangio Roadway Project. And this update, Mayor, Members of the Council, will be, uh, a monthly update until we, uh, open the road and cut the ribbon as we, as Gary's familiar with us doing that. So, uh, Gary? And I think that he's showing some of the boards, but we also have them electronically. So if you want the town clerk could display those as well, maybe the folks from home could see, see it a lot better and folks in the audience as well. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's been a lot more improvements here since career.
That's for sure.
So Gary, you have, you see what's on the screen there, so?
Oh, awesome. Okay, um. That's fine. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. I'm Gary Ratai with Kimley Horn and Associates. As your program manager, pleased to be here tonight to provide you your monthly update for the Frangio Road, roadway improvement project. Also have Janet Delgado with me here tonight. Uh, she'll give you an update on the public involvement activities as your public involvement officer. Um, Kimley Horn, we are the CEI. We oversee construction, manage the project as it's moving forward. Stantec is the engineer of record and the contractor is, um, a cost detractors. So basically for these updates, we'll go over construction activities, again, public information activities and a brief update on the schedule. For instance, starting off with the public, uh, information board. Um, and again, this being the first one, I'll do a little more detail maybe than, than the futures, but the public information board, thanks for putting that one up, includes basically the project facts overall, uh, basically the limits of the project, which is from Southwest one hundred and eighty-fourth down to Old Cutler. Uh, the overall scope of the project, it's a complete roadway streetscape improvement project. So there's roadway improvements, drainage improvements, sidewalk improvements, bus shelters, new lighting, landscaping, um, a really complete redo of the road, driveways and everything throughout. Uh, the public information board also includes the project cost, which is sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, and that's, this is a JPA, so the cost is split between the town and the county. Um, it shows the estimated time of completion, which this is a twenty-four month project, starting in June twenty twenty-four and scheduled to end in, um, June of twenty twenty-six. Uh, the board also includes a brief or, or a schematic view of the five work zones. It is broken up into five work zones, as you can see in the lower right-hand corner. There's a larger version of that off to the left with a little more detail, but the intent of that board is basically, again, just to show you the limits of each zone. While a zone is in construction, it is closed to local traffic only. That allows the contractor to be a lot more efficient. Uh, it, it's open to local traffic but closed to through traffic. It allows the contractor to be a lot more finish, uh, efficient. And it is also safer uh, to have that type of area closed because there is so much work, um, that, that is going on. And then the board includes the, um, again, the construction activity. So the project has started. Um, it takes some time. The notice to proceed was issued. Uh, it takes some time to get the contracts executed, but that's all been done with Acosta. We've moved into the shop drawing phase where we basically review all the materials and they order, you know, they go through the procurement process of structures and piping. Uh, the initial work that's starting, that's all been delivered to the site. Acosta's mobilized at their staging area, which is basically the hub of what they're doing, uh, you know, where they keep their work or work from. And to date, they started at the north end, up at Southwest one hundred and eighty-fourth, and they've been moving south with drainage. The underground drainage is really what drives the job and it's what's done first. They've also started to do some demo on the bus stations and coordinations with FPL, some of the initial lighting. But, uh, to date, that's where we are at. Again, moving south towards Sterling, uh, which is the, um, the south end of, of phase one. And at all times, we focus on working with the contractor, oversee that they're keeping the site safe. And it's a constant, keep it clean, keep it clean, minimize impacts, minimize noise, all that kind of stuff. So, so that's what we'll, we'll continue to do. Um, at this point then, I'd like to turn it over to Janet so you can give an update on public involvement.
Evening. So happy to be here. Um, I wanted to take this opportunity to keep you posted as to what the public involvement portion of this project is. So in addition to what the town did of maintaining the community, um, informed, we also had a public involvement session right here in the chamber for the community to see something like this, ask questions, and that went very well. Um, afterwards, we also had the groundbreaking ceremony. And then last but not least, I have met and established a relationship with every local business owner, uh, president and director of the schools, which are getting impacted because this first phase is basically that, the local businesses and the schools. So, um, my intention is to keep the lines of communication open between, um, the town and the community. And honestly, so far, everything has been okay. First week is always, you know, um, getting adjusted, the schools with the, the drop-ins and the drop, and the pickups, but, um, that's, that's my portion. And I look forward to seeing you guys, uh, next month. Any questions? No? You good?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, just, just lastly, uh, briefly, we'll provide you a schedule update each month, too. It's not a very detailed schedule. Again, it just focuses more on showing you where we're at on, on the various, um, work zones, how we're proceeding. Obviously, the vertical black line is, is today's date for the council meeting. Everything left of that obviously is done. And as we move forward, um, we'll keep you up to date. Uh, the intent is to stay ahead of schedule at all times if we can, and, um, we'll provide you those updates. Um, another important part of the job, too, as, as Janet mentioned, is the maintenance of traffic. That's another huge part of what we're overseeing to make sure that the, all the barricades and all the signs are in place and maintained and kept clean. Because it really, the focus really does need to be safety and, and, and good traffic control. So, so that's our approach. With that, that's our update. Next month, we'll be back to give you some more to be a little briefer. It'll just be construction and public involvement activities, but we wanted to come down and just get things kicked off. So appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary. Um, next, Mayor, Members of the Council, we have Laura Reynolds from Conservation Concepts to provide us a presentation for the Biscayne Bay Southeastern Everglades ecosystem restoration resiliency updates. Has to be an acronym for that.
Well, thank you. It's more than just that. Um, uh, I wanted to congratulate you all in, in being leaders in resiliency, restoration, sustainability. You guys really are. I think without you, we might not even have a countywide impervious surface ordinance, ordinance. So congratulations on really, you know, making an effort and making that happen. Um, let's see. Oh, is this, am I running this? Okay, thanks. These are the, just brief updates I want to give you so that you have some idea, uh, what I'm doing every month on your behalf, uh, as your environmental consultant. Um, first, obviously, uh, and unfortunately, in this case, we're stalled with the BBCR project. Uh, many of you know that, uh, funding in the federal government is an issue and we're pencils down at the moment. Uh, hopefully, uh, this will resume soon. A couple of months, maybe, uh, but this timeline is likely to even be pushed, uh, off farther, uh, maybe even a year. Uh, this slide is the last one they provided in terms of an update, but, um, you know, it continues to get pushed off into the future and we continue to try to push because it's so important for Cutler Bay's resiliency. Um, and just so you know where we are right now is we're down to four different alternatives. And we recently sent a letter pushing to keep alternative thirty-one on the table. And the reason we're doing that is because it gives a lot more operational flexibility in the system. You have Bird Drive and the Pensucco Wetlands. If you look, uh, it's, I can't point to the slide, but if you look up in, uh, on, on alternative thirty-one in the northeast portion or northwest portion, you'll see a lot more land included in that alternative than you do in thirty-two, for example. So, uh, the gist of our letter was how to make that possible. Uh, the reason they're, they're, um, you know, sort of, uh, saying that maybe it's not working that well is because that's a lot of property to buy. And it's being looked at as a reservoir. So if it doesn't deliver more water to the coast, it gets screened out. So we've listed in our letter that was sent, I believe, on the thirtieth, um, a bunch of other things that it does for us and does for Cutler Bay. And so, um, certainly, if you want a copy of that letter, we can send it to you. Probably have it on file, but this is just the front page. Um, and, uh, you know, that was, that was a lot to put together and we met with the agency members to talk about, um, those different ideas. The next thing I wanted to talk about is a little update on the BBCW project. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, uh, I'm sure you are familiar that ninety-seventh avenue is currently closed. So this is an opportunity, a window of time that we have for, until about the end of January, while the road is closed, to study the traffic pattern. And the reason we want to do this is because in the original yellow book of Everglades restoration, this whole area, and I can't really point to it, but the area where all those wonderful birds were found, the area, the fifty-three acre area. Um, so you guys know what I'm talking about and I'll zoom in in a minute. That area really was identified as a critical component of, uh, in interpretation for the public and recreation. And, uh, it's been talked about at the Water Management District many times. It's an exciting jewel for Cutler Bay. And, uh, I think it's an opportunity to spend about twenty to thirty thousand dollars, that's the estimate right now, to study the traffic patterns so that we can improve it. And if you look at that black line at the bottom, the idea is to give that information to the county, uh, whatever the results are of that traffic study and ask them, once that study is done, to improve, uh, the roadway to forty-eighth, which is at the bottom. Um, and, and that would be the new entrance or the, the way to get to the solid waste facility rather than cutting through with large trucks, uh, you know, through, um, this area. And the reason we want to change that pattern is because it's just not compatible. We see ATVs riding through here, dumping all kinds of activities that are really not conducive with recreation. Um, and so the idea is to close that road with something that could be opened in case of an emergency, of course. Something's going on, you can swing those gates open and you can, uh, have it open back up. And, and so the reason we have to act now is because the road's closed. And so, um, I encourage you to take advantage of this moment because it likely won't happen again and we won't have the data, uh, to convince the county that this is possible and doable. So that's ask one. And this is just a zoom in of what's possible. And if you look at that elbow area, uh, next to the bike path in green, that's, that would be the additional bike path. So that would all be pedestrian and bike path. Uh, and it would be, there, there could be a parking area if we wanted to. There could be, like I said, a roundabout was a suggestion, just so if somebody drives in there, they can get right back out. Um, and this could be another jewel for interpreting what's happening with Everglades restoration. And these are some other features that, of course, the Water Management District presented to you, uh, probably about a year ago. Um, but I think with this plus what we could do, this could be a really great piece, uh, uh, to add to the park system here in Cutler Bay. Um, the other update is just that, obviously, you guys know, exciting news with the million dollars that was allocated. Uh, this is a, a concept drawing from the county and we are going to be working with the county, hopefully, to get them to work on the engineering for this spreader canal and pump system. Again, this is going to help with flooding. Uh, it will help with flexibility in the system and it will help restore some of, you know, hydrate some of these wetlands, uh, that are just to the east. So this is an exciting small project and we're gonna keep pushing for, uh, additional funding. Okay, update on the Back Bay study. Uh, exciting news. Cutler Bay, obviously, in the running for nature-based solutions. Right now, we're gonna get about four hundred thousand dollars from this year's Worda, we hope. That's not to Cutler Bay, but to figure out exactly which project will be chosen. So we are in the running for some of those nature-based solution projects. And I will keep pushing for Cutler Bay to receive those projects. Um, but that's where we are on the timeline and it was signed, chief's report signed, and a little bit of money coming out of Worda twenty twenty-four. Um, the other thing we have, obviously, are those properties that have been identified as critical and will be elevated as, as a result of the project. So Cutler Bay is part of Back Bay. It has been signed and we're moving on to the next step. So that's very exciting. There is going to be a charrette in October and I will attend on your behalf. Oh, let's see. We did send a letter asking for all of those things, so, um, I probably should have put that first. But anyway, we asked for it and we got it. So, good job. Um, the other thing is that, um, the Water Management District, uh, flood resiliency plan does include improvements for Cutler Bay. Here's a list of those improvements and some of them are the things that we asked for in our letter sent June twenty-sixth. And again, I can provide you with. And again, I can provide you with copies of any of these letters. Other thing I wanted to update you on were the development threats that are existing uh, around the county. Many acres are uh, in jeopardy as we, as we sit here today. There's ten projects that are either deferred or on the calendar or coming up, not exactly scheduled for an exact date. But I made this little chart so that you can sort of keep up with that. And altogether, we're talking about two, over two thousand acres of agriculture land and over three hundred acres of wetlands in jeopardy. And that's across the county. So why is this important? Because, you know, one of the things that we can do, obviously, is anytime there's an application outside the UDB is let the commissioners know that, you know, this is not going to help us with flood and resiliency. We want to protect as much green space as we can, so we have operational flexibility in the system. And we want to fund the EAL program so that we can purchase any available willing seller land that's out there. Um, you know, that's a very important program. And this year on the budget, it was, you know, a little touch and go. It's not done yet. Whether the EAL program would have enough funding, I don't think that it does. So one of the things you can do is obviously uh, push for more funding for the EAL program. The other thing that I brought to you the last time I was here uh, is uh, helping to protect wetlands. Making sure that uh, everything in our CDMP is up to date in terms of wetland protections and in Chapter twenty-four, strengthening the county's wetland protections. And we, that was something that Joan Browder, who, if you didn't know her, was really uh, the champion for Biscayne Bay and for wetlands across the county. She just recently passed away. And at the Watershed Advisory Board, um, we talked about naming this the Joan Browder Wetlands Protection Plan. And if you haven't done so already, and I don't think you have, an urging to the County Commission to really strengthen our wetlands protections would be ideal. And I think I sent you guys some language on how to do that. Last but not least, it is the anniversary of the Aquatic Preserve System in twenty twenty-five. And in twenty twenty-four, we're celebrating Biscayne Bay as the first aquatic preserve uh, established in the system. And with that came a lot of protections, including uh, the, you know, the first rules about creating um, uh, sewer, uh, sewer recycling and making sure that uh, the county stopped dumping sewage in Biscayne Bay. So think about it, fifty years ago, we were still dumping sewage in Biscayne Bay. So we've come a long way. Um, and so there's an Adopt a Storm Drain Project that uh, is a project uh, that we'll be working on with Miami-Dade County. And I thought maybe I'd bring it to you guys as an idea to get involved uh, in the Adopt a Drain Program. And this is something where public-private partnerships can help improve the storm drains uh, that you have in Cutler Bay. So um, if you're interested in that, I certainly can give you more information on it. And then those of you who remember, uh, I've got one more thing. Those of you who remember uh, going to the Everglades Coalition Conference uh, with me, I think it was a couple of years ago. This year, it's going to be here in Miami-Dade County and we're celebrating the fortieth anniversary. So I think it would be ideal to showcase Cutler Bay, whether you become a sponsor, have a table, you all attend. It's a good opportunity, not only to strengthen the bonds with agencies, but to really learn about what's happening in the whole system. So I encourage you to go to that. Or become a sponsor. Thanks. Let me know if you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Laura. Appreciate that. Council, any questions? No? Thank you very much. Very comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council. Thank you, Laura. As you can see, we're uh, small, mighty Laura's everywhere. I mean, in fact, those letters that that she uh, develops for us, Mayor, and I know that you're all copied CC'd. I mean, I think the the shortest one was like nine pages. So so those are, those are books. Uh, uh, quickly, Mayor Members of Council, a a couple of additional things. Uh, first time ever, we're going to be broadcasting on X Open Mic Night, right? As uh, we have here, that's, it's going to be on September the twenty-third at five P M. Uh, be my first time doing X Space, you know? So that'll be uh, our commitment to, as we mentioned in the Charter Commission, review of using multi-channels and modes of communication, including through traditional media, online communications, to provide information to residents. It's going to be our, our first ever X broadcast and I'll let you know how that goes. Also, uh, Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth at six P M., we have our second and final budget hearing at at in our council chambers. So that's going to be something that it's going to be next week. Yesterday, the Board of County Commissioners met um, as the, wearing their hats as a TPO uh, inside the Long Raise Transportation Plan, L R P T, uh, plan. We had uh, Marlin Road was included there as a complete street. So as I mentioned to the council, we, a Marlin Road Complete Street Project now is on their official Long Raise Transportation Plan. What does that mean? It will then open up the uh, avenues for us to go through and ask for funding through a joint participation agreement, J P A, similar to what we're doing with Fringe Road, meaning that the county participates in that, in that project. As you know, right now, we received the four million dollar appropriation from Congressman Salazar for the construction of it, but we're also currently in the design phase that we received two grants for in the over nine hundred eighty thousand dollars that we're currently designing. So we are, that project, we know is going to be somewhere in that eighteen to twenty-one million dollar range. So this puts us in at the table there. Um, also for our, our neighbors at Old Cutler Glen, great news, our Public Works Department, I think Afraid is here and you're near, uh, Stormwater Television. Um, Eighty-second Avenue has been, is open as of today. Eighty-second Avenue corridor from Old Color to one eight-four Street is, has been opened. Um, and it's one month ahead of schedule. So that'll alleviate some of those side roads there for a lot of the different detours that we have. Also, I'd like to publicly thank Commissioner Cohen Higgins. Uh, she has fought very hard for us to put in what's called a P D and E study for the pedestrian bridge on Southland Mall at the uh, Alpada Southwest one twelfth Avenue uh, B R T stop there. Yeah, what's a uh, uh, a P D and E is a project development and environmental study that needs to be done in order to find out the cost benefit analysis of designing, whatever you're designing and environmental impacts. But most importantly, Mayor Members of Council, once that's completed, it's going to open up the funding for any type of county, state, or federal funding appropriation. So that's something that we're real excited about. In fact, uh, last year, we had that as one of our priorities with the uh, through the state legislature. And one of the things we're missing was a P D and E. So at this point, the county will do the P D and E study for us. It's about a year and a half long project uh, to evaluate all different alternatives there for, for that project. Um, lastly, um, had a conference call today with our, with our environmental uh, uh, council, Mr. Michael Goldstein, um, regarding our Blue Heron Park. So uh, updates that we have, all the samples are, are back. Uh, all the drilling has been done. Um, the samples have been reviewed by the lab. Uh, on Monday, we're going to be submitting what's called the uh, our draft SAR, S A R Site Assessment Report for the soils. Um, the arsenic is still way above the, the approved level. Um, just to give you an idea, it's five point five parts per million and we have a lot of sites that are in the seven to eight ranges. Nevertheless, we still are pursuing what we call the demand letters from, from obviously the, the consultant and the previous owners of it. And it will certainly, you know, uh, be posted on that and and I'm available to brief the council with that. But I mean, our, our, our main goal right now is to make sure that, that we get that to Miami County Durham, get the method of removal uh, approved by them and then we will come back with uh, some proposals for, for the council. So our goal is to open that up quickly. At the same time, going after the, the consultant and the owners of the previous, that previously transferred property to us. And that completes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to the Town Attorney's Report.
Usually I don't say anything, but I have a, I have bragging rights. Our firm uh, made law that's relevant to every municipality, Eleventh Circuit, recently, in a case called McDonough versus Homestead. The opinion came down yesterday and what it did was settle the question of what kind of speech restrictions uh, municipality can employ during a public meeting such as this. And it reaffirmed what we do here, which is that we restrict public comments to comments that are relevant to the business that we're doing here. And more importantly, that whatever restrictions are done in the name of allowing, say, for an orderly meeting or for another uh, type of public meeting to be restricted to the topic at hand are reasonable. And unfortunately, in the Mr. McDonough's case, Homestead had to um, arrest him for trespassing after he was banned from a meeting for disruptive behavior and he sued and lost and the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals reaffirmed that the city was within its rights to keep order within its meeting. It's important because there have been some claims that the First Amendment gives people the right to come into a public meeting and stand at the podium and rail about the city not doing enough to stop the zombie apocalypse or some other kind of thing that's, you know, delusional and not relevant or talk about national politics. And we do, you know, here, it's, it's, it's easy now, but in times and in other cities, it's not always easy to keep decorum in order in the, in the uh, chambers. And so the Eleventh Circuit reaffirmed after uh, the brilliant arguments by my partner at Gettys that um, public meetings are limited public forums and therefore reasonable uh, risk, subject matter restrictions on reasonable viewpoint neutral restrictions are permissible.
Right, great. Thank you, Mitch. And also, uh, like again, you know, as many of you know, we um, had a lot of negotiations current concerning the homeless trusts uh, and La Quinta uh, initiative. And just to let you know that the work that um, Mitch and Chad do um, behind the scenes is immense. Um, it's not just them giving you advice, uh, but it's also opening the lines of communication to help things flow better. So that that by far is the greatest value of your firm. So thank you for what you and and Chad have done.
Thank you for that.
All right, takes us to the Town Clerk's Report.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. We know that the November fifth election is uh, coming quickly towards us. So we do have the sample ballot that was provided to us by uh, Dade County Elections. We've uploaded that to the website, so that's available if anybody wants it. And two important dates that I'd like to remind everybody of, October seventh is the deadline to register to vote in this election. And also, if you would like to request a vote by mail ballot, the deadline for that is October twenty-fourth. So keep those in mind.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to consent agenda, looking for a motion for the consent agenda if there's not any polls.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Callie, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
A second by Councilman Ramirez, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Passes. All right, that takes us to our first, I am, where's it, give me a second.
Mayor, we need to open up public comments again.
What's that?
Public comments.
Yeah, public comments. All right, I'm now opening up a floor for public comments. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, Town Mayor, Juror, and Council. I appreciate the work you've been doing on the restoration, yes, Brook de Melo Gomez, eight five zero one Caribbean Boulevard. I appreciate the work that you've been doing on, on restoration and the flood plain management. I know that I raised concerns over the forty-four percent rule, which is coming up for the first reading tonight and maybe an adjustment from the five-year time period to one-year time period. I do encourage you, I know I asked previously, how many homes or residents in the town are affected by that rule? And there was no record or number of how many houses currently would have to elevate their home if they were to do upgrades on their house that met that criteria. I am concerned about that and feel those homeowners should know that they're in that criteria with moving forward. Um, and I hope that you will consider that as well as perhaps some uh, clear guidance on what happens if they have a leaking roof and they can't continue because they have to elevate. How do they protect their land? What kind of decisions they have to make? Do I have to sell my home? Those kind of things are needed, I think, by the homeowner so they know that's coming down the road. The second thing I want to say is as we begin to go in and approve plans for elevating homes and and changing driveway slopes, um, it's important that our Building Department and zoning consider the landscape so those lands hold their water. I hear from too many homeowners that current development is not holding their water and is spilling over into neighbors' yards or into the road and causing flooding in the road. I think we need to carefully consider that, that the swales and the berms and the other infrastructures that are put into place do a proper job on helping homeowners' lands retain their water. Thank you very much.
Please have a good member to, to use the clock. I appreciate it. Any other speakers?
We do have one online.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bernard Butney. Um, I live right here in Cutler Bay.
And your address?
And I would never have thought that.
I'm sorry, you need your address.
Pardon me?
We need your address as well. Your address?
Home on what?
Your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two zero eight three six Southwest eighty-fifth Place in Cutler Bay. Okay? I never thought I would have the opportunity to bring this up. In fact, this is the first time I'm in front of, of uh, the City Council here. Uh, I've lived across the country and I mentioned something like this before. I'm an old guy, I'm seventy-six years of age, um, generation when they used to have the Bible in schools. I can remember a Mexican immigrant living in New Jersey who would be up there, Pledge allegiance to the Bible, okay? We went through that. Nearly forty years later, I would be out here, okay? And I worked for the U S Customs Service, now as known as Customs and Border Protection. I was on the watch with others when they were airdropping cocaine and marijuana as close as the Bahamas, even not far from our shores here and the Caribbean. And when the Hurricane Andrew came through and when I worked at the Coast Guard uh, uh, building and they closed that to customs, I wound up there, I was catapulted, pardon the pun, out there in California. My whole point here is that during that period of time, as early as the nineteen nineties, I naively did not know that we would be having drugs and alcohol and fights and even sex, I understand, going on in schools, in our schools today, to the point that we're having shootings, eleven and thirteen-year-olds doing this. And I asked myself, why is this happening when we have school resource officers and we have police in them? I will end with this, that Governor DeSantis, among in Florida and in other states, Louisiana and Texas, has made law the National School Chaplain Association. I'm letting you all you know, in case you don't know, that it exists and was made into law, that something can be done and should be done and not just wait around and seeing that this happens. And I thank you for the opportunity of coming out here to speak. Thank you. Well, by the way, I'm giving these out. More God, Less Crime. It's a good book. And I'm giving it to your police officers. I call them tickets. Thank you.
All right, anybody else wishing to speak? No? All right, go to the queue.
Ms. Bowen Bell?
Yes. Grace and peace. My name is Tracy Bowen Bell. My address is ninety-eight ten Southwest two twenty-first Street, Cutler Bay, three three one nine zero. And I represent one of the five point one million amputees in the U S. I also represent the So Everybody Can Move Legislation Movement and my household, which includes my father, my husband, who is dis, is differently-limbed as well. I come asking for help, but not only asking for help, but to also be a servant to the community with the gifts and resources that I have. I had the fortune to meet Fernando when he came to me saying, ma'am, I need you to take care of your yard. But because I've been recovering from this life change in February of twenty twenty-three, I've not been home and I've been caring for my mother who went through breast cancer treatment. Long story short, after Fernando walked me through what I needed and a neighbor cleared my backyard and now I just need to resolve a car situation, I asked him, does the village of Cutler Bay have any resources that can help the disabled or the elderly when they get in these situations? And he said, no, I can't even refer you to people. And I said, who can I speak to to ask about that? And this is why I'm here at this meeting, to speak to you all, to say, what can I do to help? Form a committee of some sort, bring together the resources that I have at the national level and the local level. I serve on boards in the community. I'm back to doing what I did before the amputation. But it's still a struggle because right now, the burden of, the financial burden and the physical burden of all this work is But it's still a struggle because right now, the burden of, the financial burden and the physical burden of all this work is on me. And I don't believe that should be so in a community where we have resources. If my neighbor can gift me the labor of clearing my backyard, surely there is something that the entities where I pay taxes and the community that I serve with my own labor can do to help me and others who are in a similar situation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the queue?
No one in the queue.
All right. Public comments is now closed. That takes us to item 8A. You can read the item, please.
An ordinance of the mayor of the town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, amending Chapter 18 Floodplain Management of the Town Code of Ordinances to add and amend definitions and regulations relating to floodplain management and floodplain resistant development standards, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Vice Mayor Callahan, this is your item, that floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The item that is before you tonight serves as some adjustments to our floodplain ordinance in specific adjustments to our substantial compliant rule. As, as you heard me mentioned before, currently the town has adopted a 44% rule, which means that if the modifications or repairs that you do to your home equal 44% of the market value of the home, the home then will need to come up to current code. In the current, in current ordinance also, that, that dollar figure is cumulative over five years. This has been a, a concern of mine in the Floodplain Mitigation Committee for some time and working with town staff have proposed the, the following changes. One, what has really been the driving force behind this is the fact that if there are residents who improve their home over a five-year period and there is some type of natural disaster that comes about, that they may reach that threshold and may be one, forced to bring their home into compliance, which means raising the entire home up to current flood levels. Or what is even a bigger concern is that if they do near that financial threshold, that they may not pursue making necessary repairs or improvements to the home, such as impact windows, garage doors, roofing and such, you know, really hurricane-proofing the house. With that being said, the first, the first proposed change affects the cumulative period. The current rule improvement period is five years. The proposed change will reduce that to one year, right? So that means that every year, that financial impact will start all over again. This change will result in a reduction of 20 points in our current CRD, but the town will still remain a class three. And working with our Floodplain Mitigation Committee, we are confident that we will be able to regain those 20 points with new projects that we are currently proposing and well on our way to getting a class two certification. Right now, that class three is offering a 35% discount. So that change, although reducing our points, does not change our, our classification. The, the second proposed change, again, has to do with the threshold cumulative of the 44%. Our proposed change is to raise that to 49%, right? So that, that gives an additional 5% financial leeway to folks that are making improvements to their homes. That change does not affect our CRS rating. Also, in, in this, in this proposal as well, there is a storage of hazardous substance change, the prohibition of storage of hazardous substance in a special flood hazard area, right? Which I think goes hand in hand into protecting our, our, our natural preserve areas. Proposed change requiring filling all non-conversion agreement with the clerk of courts to run with the property. That's just more of a legal term. And also manufactured homes adopting the definition from the Florida Administrative Code of 15C-1-0101 and prohibits the installation of manufactured homes within the town of Cutler Bay. And so those are the proposed changes that are in the ordinance before you.
All right. Councilman Lord also knows that you're, does she'll sponsor this?
Yes. Yes, I am. And I was pleased to co-sponsor this. When our vice mayor mentioned this on the dais, that he was going to take a closer look at that, I was very happy to be part of it. I worked very closely with the town manager and town staff. And I think it's really important for us to point out that we are, one, increasing the protection to our Biscayne Bay and Water Quality by adding a higher standard, not a lower, but a higher standard, not allowing the storage of hazardous substances in the special flood area, hazard area. This will decrease any infiltrations and discharge of chemicals into the floodwater and also potentially gives us 20 CRS points. We also have a higher regulatory standard that may yield extra CRS class points by enclosure limits for elevated properties and the requirements for non-conversion agreements, which is required to be recorded with the property deed and runs with the land future owners. This potentially gives us another 90 CRS points. So while we're initially losing some, we have the potential of gaining a lot more. These are also consistent with the goals of our Floodplain Mitigation Committee that our vice mayor liaisons and with their mission statement. So I just, I felt like that was very important to point out because when people here are losing points, it initially scares them a little bit. But in fact, we're actually raising the standards in two areas.
All right. Thank you very much. Ralph, did you have comments on this?
No, members of council, I think that, I think, you know, our, our town public work staff has, has met with the, with our own consultant as well as the state of Florida and working closely with the town attorney's office. So I think that, that there may be a little tweak between first and second reading with some warehouses based on some of the comments that we received post-agenda from the state of Florida. But again, it's just, it's just, it's nothing going to be, it's not going to be substantial, meaning that it's just putting some warehouses there that adds to Florida building code changes, art code changes as well.
All right. Any other additional comments from the council? No, you know, ordinances like these, again, you look at them, it doesn't look too ominous, but it could have a profound effect on individuals. So I'm glad they were taking the time. This is the first reading, so I'm looking forward to see if there's any additional concerns about this as we go forward. But overall, I'm very pleased with it. So with that, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve 8A.
We have a motion to approve by Vice, uh, Mayor Callahan, looking for a second.
I second.
Second one by Councilman Lord. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lord?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Yes.
Mayor Mayorbo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Takes us to item 10A.
An ordinance of the mayor of the town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, creating section 3-43 Reasonable Accommodation and section 3-44 Religious Land Use Relief of the Town Code of Ordinances to establish procedures for requests for relief from specified laws, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Ralph, turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, members of council. This ordinance for second reading was advertised in the Miami Herald on September the 8th in the neighbor section. And we're both, I'm here as well as, you know, Jared Munster, Community Development Director, here to answer any questions. This does require a public hearing.
All right. Public hearings required on this. We'll bring it up on the floor for a public hearing on the side. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. There are none in the chambers or any on the queue?
No one in the queue.
Public hearing is now closed. Any comments or questions from the council? No. Looking for a motion on this item?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Lord, looking for a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Duncan. All, the, or the ordinance, but roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lord?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Yes.
Mayor Mayorbo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Takes us to item 11B, A, please.
A resolution of the mayor and the town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, naming the town-owned 8.5 acre and 3.5 acre parks, folios 36-6003-001-0013 located at 18551 Old Cutler Road and 20002 Old Cutler Road, collectively the parks, Coastal Ridge Park and Veterans Park respectively, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Callahan just wants to fill our agenda up tonight, apparently with this item. So I'll give the floor again, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to feel popular tonight. That's, that's all. The resolution before you is a resolution that would officially name two parcels of land that the town had, had acquired. Again, I want to give my thanks to the Park and Recreational Advisory Committee for working very hard on, on coming up with, with names for these two lots. I, I would like to make an amendment to the resolution. And I'll, I'll get, yeah, I would like to make a resolution to, to, or I make a, an adjustment to the resolution on the naming of Coastal Ridge Park to change that to Coastal Ridge Preserve, which I think more really encompasses that, that particular parcel, right? And believe it or not, we, in, we don't take the naming of these particular parks lightly, right? It's, it's just not sitting around and, and coming up with an idea. There's a, the Parks Committee actually did a lot of research specifically on this parcel. And we were given direction really on how to name this to, to accurately describe the parcel, but also its location, you know? So Coastal Ridge Park was the original one, but I believe that amending it to, to preserve would more, would more capture the, the, the intent of that park. The second one is the newly acquired park on 87th and, and Old Cutler Road. The Parks Committee had, had actually worked hard on this one as well and come up with several names. But in discussion with some of our residents and staff, it just really stuck out that we should consider naming this Veterans Park. And the reason for that is the association of Cutler Bay with Homestead Air Force Base and the military. Really, Cutler, Cutler Ridge at the time, a lot of the housing was developed to support the base. I moved here in 1976 to Cutler Ridge at the time as part of the United States Air Force. There's other members on our council, I know Councilmember Lord also had a similar experience. And that base, even though now a reserve base, but prior to the hurricane, was such a large part of our community. And we do serve a lot of veterans in our community. And there are a lot of veterans that reside at East Ridge. So I, I think in talking with the committee, that proposing the name for Veterans Park and being able to provide a type of monument, you know, that would associate us with the military seemed to be the best way to go. So with that being said, that's the resolution before you to name the parks with, with the, the change from Colster Ridge to Colster.
All right. Counsel, any comments on this? No. I do like the addition of the word preserve because it accurately describes it. So change your mind?
No, I was reaching.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Councilmember Ramirez, you're right.
First off, I actually, I'm, I'm very happy with the word preserve as, you know, Coastal Ridge Preserve as opposed to Cutler Ridge Park, you know, it'd be, it's just too close together. So I think the preserve thing is a good move. As far as the Veterans Park, since I am the one veteran that is on the council, I am hoping that, and I'll be available next week to sit for my bronze statue, just in case, you know? Thank you for that, sir.
All right. Any other comments? No? All right. Looking for a motion for approval?
Motion.
All right. We have a motion by.
Motion to approve 11A.
Motion approved by Vice Mayor Callahan, looking for a second?
I'm going to second it.
Second by Councilman Lord, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.